So I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is a regular Commissioners' Court Meeting, County of Starr, Monday, May 13th. Let the record show we do have quorum, everyone being present. If everyone will please stand for a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the Constitution, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, my nation and her God, in the mission of every duty and justice for all.
I'd like to thank everyone for being here this morning, and we're gonna move some items around to facilitate some of you that are visiting. You're certainly welcome to stay, you know, for the entire meeting, but once your item is done, if you have other things to do, you certainly can leave. Public comments?
There's none, Your Honor.
Do we have minutes?
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Second. Motion to second to approve the minutes. Discussion. Honorable fair, please say aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Next item is vendor's list.
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Second. Motion to second to approve a vendor's list. Discussion. Honorable fair, please say aye. Oppose. Motion carries. And the claims. Motion to second to approve claims. Discussion. Honorable fair, please say aye. Oppose. Motion carries. We do have some presentations and proclamations on the agenda, so if it's okay, I'd like to move to item 10, and this is a proclamation proclaiming May as Stroke Awareness Month for Starr County. Mr. Liscano from DHR is here.
They can join us. Just real quick, honorable Judge, County Commissioners, we want to thank you for giving us this opportunity and allowing us to be here today. It's only fitting, this is National Hospital Week, and we are here today as, you know, the healthcare providers in this area to ensure that we bring awareness to National Stroke Awareness Month. We have a couple of people that are going to say a few words today, and I just want to take this opportunity to thank you for giving us this opportunity to not only bring the information, the awareness and education, but to join us in providing this information for countywide. So on behalf of our Board of Governors, our physicians, our employees, we want to make sure that we thank you. I'm gonna go ahead and pass it on to Ms. Betsy Martinez, which will introduce a couple of the special guests that are here, and after that, we want to see if we could take a quick picture with you all. Thank you.
Good morning, Your Honor, Commissioners. As Mr. Liscano said, we would like to extend our gratitude and your unwavering support for DHR Health in Starr County. With me today, we have Irene Lattis with DHR Health, Michael Ramires Starr County Memorial Hospital, and Eloy Garza Jr. with Starr County Memorial Hospital. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, Your Honor and Commissioners. First of all, we want to thank you for the opportunity. On behalf of Doctors Hospital at Renaissance, we want to thank Starr County as well as Starr County Memorial Hospital, and really, we want to bring recognition, awareness about stroke, which is truly a very debilitating disease. It's the leading cause of disability in the United States, and it's the third-leading cause of death in the state of Texas. And when we were looking at our data for the Rio Grande Valley, we saw that only 17% of our patients are arriving within the timeframe for treatment, the recommended treatment time, and every minute that a stroke, you know, is occurring, that is, time is brain, right? So we're losing millions of neurons, and we wanted to make sure that we share that message with the community members. Many times, when you're having a stroke, you don't have that pain, you don't have the pain that you would have as a heart attack, so a lot of the community members do not recognize the signs and symptoms of a stroke because they are more subtle, and we like to teach the acronym BFAST, which is Balance, Eyes, Facial Drobe, Arm Weakness, Learn Speech, and Time. And I see our 911 providers are here, which play an essential role in the treatment of stroke, and less than 50% of the population is calling 911 when they're having a stroke. So again, a very important message that we need to bring out to the community. And we are very proud to have worked with Starr County Memorial Hospital. Over the past several years, we've been able to use the most advanced technology. When a patient is having a stroke here in Starr County, we're able to recognize that they're having a large stroke and able to use artificial intelligence, advanced technology to activate a team at DHR and provide the most advanced, highest level of care for these patients. So thank you for your partnership, and thank you for continuing to spread that message to our loved ones, our community members, employees, coworkers, that stroke is debilitating but is also treatable, and it is preventable. So thank you for recognizing May as Stroke Awareness Month.
Motion to second to approve. Under discussion, you know, I just want to thank DHR for your presence here in Starr County, and of course Starr County Memorial. I think this partnership has been one of the best partnerships we've had here in the county as far as, certainly for healthcare, for our citizens, and we look forward to continuing this partnership and advancing a lot of the specialty clinics that we need in our community. As everyone's aware, Starr County is not a small county anymore. We're almost 70,000, you know, honestly, I think we're over 70,000, but that's what the census says. So, you know, we certainly thank DHR for your presence here in the county, and of course Starr County Memorial has also been a key player in healthcare here in our community, and we're here to, and I think I can speak for the court, any way that we can help, we certainly are more than willing to help. Again, thank you all so much for taking time to be here, and we do have a motion, a second. Honorable fair, please say aye. Oppose. Motion carries. You all want to take a picture? We have a couple of presentations. First one is from Tixtad, Mr. Frank Cantu. This is item 8.
Yes, good morning, Judge, and good morning Commissioners. Thank you for this opportunity to allow me to provide you with some project updates, some of our major projects. With me today is Fred Lopez, Main Supervisor, and Danny Flores, he's our construction engineer, so he helps out with the management of our projects in the county. I would like to start talking about our projects that are in design, in the design stage right now, and then I'm gonna talk about some more projects in the construction phase. So to begin, in the design phase, we obviously have Stale Loop 185, which is one of the major projects for the county, right? And so that project is progressing very well. As you all know, it's broken down in three phases. Phase one is from 755 to 3167, and that one is still scheduled to let in August 2025, so we're a few months away next year, right? Next summer, it should happen. We have full right-of-way already acquired, so that's a great news, right, that we already have right-of-way, so now we're just working on the utility side, making sure everything's being relocated for that phase one segment. Phase two segment, that one lets January 2026, that's the one that goes from 3167 to 649. So that one lets about a few months after the first segment, right? So that one right-of-way has also been fully acquired, so that's great news, you know, to hear. And so those first two segments, like I said, they're moving forward, everything's moving forward as planned. Any questions on those so far? Or... Okay. Phase three is the one that goes all the way to Loma Blanca, right, 649 to Loma Blanca. That one's scheduled for January 2029, so a little bit further out still, right, but we're still working on the right-of-way. Hopefully by the end of the summer, we should also acquire right-of-way for that third segment. So that will help us move forward, and in case we can accelerate the project, is gonna help us bring it forward. I do want to bring up the Stale Loop 185 extension project, so I know...
Before you move on, Frank, you say you have the right-of-way for the first two phases?
Yes.
What about the funding? Is it...
Yes, also the funding.
It's also...
Yes, so those are...
Okay.
Yes. The third one is the one that we're still working on, the fourth funding. Yeah, that's why it's so far out as far as the, you know, the letting date. Yes. The plans are also ready, Judge, for the first two segments as well, so, so yeah, everything's in place.
Very good.
Yes. Stale Loop 185 extension is the one that goes from 755 towards the valley, right, back to 83, and I know, I think it was brought up last time, right? So we are looking into that segment. We have a consultant who's gonna start working on a feasibility study to get that segment to connect back to 83, okay? So that consultant is already on board, it took us a while, but we have a consultant already, so just wanted to update you all on that as well, because it connects to, this is an entire loop, right, Stale Loop 185. Okay?
That one is programmed to come out where on US 83?
Well, that's part of the feasibility study. I mean, great question.
Okay, so you don't have a route?
We don't have an exact route. We have an idea from previous studies, right, but we still are looking, that's gonna be part of the study.
Okay.
What is the feasible route?
Which is that route?
Which is a route about...
The one you're talking about?
Yeah, it has to connect back to 83.
That's the one that you have been talking about, Commissioner?
Yes. Yeah, that's the one I'm talking about, so...
But they're just doing a study, and they don't know where you're gonna start.
Yeah, of course, no, we don't know yet. We need to look at the environmental, we need to look at all those different aspects. So that's part of the study itself, yes.
But I hope it comes true, because you all started backwards.
Yes.
The problem we have is, down here, people come, and now they're heading for escape routes, and everything is done, but the only end for the...
Yes.
It's just on the study.
Right, and the previous studies will probably be used, so that will help it, the previous studies that have been done, but this new study will take into account new laws, new rules, you know, things like that, so, so yes. All righty, any questions on Stale Loop 185? Okay.
The light there on Flores and 755?
The light in Flores 755?
When will that be completed?
So I know there was some material that we were expecting, so I will need to get more details, and we can get back with you individually, Commissioner, on that. I don't have an exact timeline on the completion of it.
And the removal of the concrete island there where the old railroad crossing used to be?
Yes, that's another one that I also have to look into as well. I know this summer, we already removed the items, right, the railroad items, right? But as far as, and that actual construction removal, we needed to make sure we do it this summer when there's no school traffic. So I know this is the goal this summer, to remove also the concrete pad, right, as well, and remove that island, so, but I'll have to get you more details on that, so we can get back with you on that, to provide you more of the timeline for that. Okay? Just a few more updates, US 83, the divided segment that's north of Loma Blanca, that one is scheduled to let next month already, so construction will get started shortly after that. That's again from Loma Blanca north towards Los Arrieros area, so that's already coming up. We have 755 passing lanes, so from 1017 down to 2294, that's scheduled to let July 2024, so two months away already. So that's a $31 million project that is coming up already for the county as well. And then lastly, in the design phase, I have the Loma Blanca Bridge Replacements, I know Commissioner Peña's area, it's a $1.6 million, and it's scheduled to let January 2025. So it's also a few months away, so I wanted to bring it up in this meeting, for you all aware of that. Again, there's two bridges that are being replaced for the county. And then we have a sidewalk construction in the Roma High School area, cost of $1.5 million, April 2025 letting date. So that's also, you know, around the corner as well. So those are the projects that are in the design phase and the plans, and they're about to let eventually. Any questions on some of those or other projects?
Yeah, I have a question, Frank, on the stretch, the divided highway from Loma Blanca to, I guess, the county line or where the other one is under construction right now. I know Commissioner Peña, for years, has been, had tried to get you all to do a comfort station in the Los Arrieros area. We used to have a, I guess, a roadside rest area, but not a comfort station, and they removed it, Tixtad removed it, and they never replaced it. There's no bathrooms from Laredo all the way to McAllen, really, there's no comfort stations anywhere. So any possibility that that could be done now that you're whitening?
Yeah, and by that, that's a great question, by that you mean, because I know there's also just truck parking that's being looked at, or you mean more for the public?
Well, maybe there where the truck parking would be, to have a comfort station, much like 281?
Yeah.
And 77, when you head out of the valley?
Yes, right.
Maybe having the same thing on 83 as you head out towards Laredo.
Yes.
You know, I think it's something that is needed. Like I said, Commissioner Peña, may he rest in peace, he tried for years to get you guys to do that, and it was always, yeah, we're looking, we're studying, and it never got done. Now I think we have a prime opportunity that since you'll be working there, that maybe that could be done.
Yeah, that's a great, great, great point, right, and so I will bring that up for sure. I'm thinking, just thinking out loud, like they say, Stale Loop 185, Phase 3, we have a lot of right-of-way, right? So maybe that's a potential area, so definitely, I will bring that up to the district and see if that's something that we can incorporate, for sure. So appreciate you bring that up.
Well, we certainly would appreciate your help if we could get that done.
Yes, yes, definitely. I will start looking into that, for sure. All right, and just to finalize, projects in construction, you mentioned, Judge, north of the Los Arrieros area, right, so that project is actually about to be completed August 2024 already, so the end of the summer, we're about to complete that project, so that's ahead of schedule, because we had it for December 2024, so they finishing ahead, and so that's good, because then the other project is gonna start right to the south of that. So just an update on that, and then finally, US 83 overlay from 3167, we're resurfacing 3167 to Charko Blanco Road. That project already started, but in the Falfurias area, because it's different locations, so you haven't seen anything yet, but in July 2024, so midsummer, you will start seeing that resurfacing project in that area, okay? So just wanted to provide you those general updates on our major projects. Of course, there's smaller projects that we have, some, I'll get details on that for you, but are there any questions on these that I have provided, or just anything in general?
Any questions?
Okay. All right, well, hearing none, I thank you all for your time this morning.
Frank, thank you, thank you so much for coming to give us an update, you know, we really appreciate that, and you all are doing it more periodically, so we thank you for that.
Thank you, Judge. Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay, next presentation that we had is La Morita and El Rucio Ranch Roads, residents and ranchers. Please identify yourself for the record.
Pardon me?
Please identify yourself for the record.
My name is Doug Campbell. I have a, live with my wife out on El Rucio Ranch. We were here on March 11th, and I'd like to take the conversation that we started there and take it to the next step, and I want to thank you, first of all, for the opportunity to come here and talk to you again about the problem that we have out there. My takeaway today would like to be to see how we can move forward with the issues that we have on the roads, and to make aware, the court aware, of just how bad it's gotten out there. I think there's some perception that people don't understand just how bad it is. This morning, for example, we got a quarter of inch of rain, we had two people get stuck and had to be pulled out. I barely made it in a four-wheel-drive forerunner with AT tires, so it's got spots just where it's almost impassable under any type of conditions other than bright and sunny. I sent a letter in on behalf of the residents and ranchers, I hope you've all had a chance to review that, that outlines kind of the depth of the problem, and I want to thank Mr. Pettis for the efforts you've made since March 11th to try to keep the roads maintained and passable, but we think that's a step in the right direction, but it's not the fix. If we can continue with maintenance efforts, with maybe some colicchi and continued maintaining, but I'd like to get on the docket of what we just heard and see if we could get a project to really get La Morita Road in particular up to some standards that we really need in the community out there. It's becoming more and more traveled with heavier and bigger trucks because of the wind industry. We've, it's dangerous, my wife almost got run off the road by a convoy of large trucks throwing rocks and speeding. It's, so it's, the road just not fit for purpose anymore. We've brought the wind, we as a community have brought the wind industry in, which is great, jobs, revenues, et cetera, but it's got some unintended consequences as far as the, as La Morita Road in particular, and affecting people that are least available to afford it. The ruts from these trucks are getting so deep that it's dragging on the bottom of normal cars when we try to get in and out, where before it was light trucks and cars and, you know, agricultural vehicles, but now it's getting to the point where it's just impassable for extended periods of time. So I just want to raise that awareness to the court and get some cooperation, maybe come out and see it after it's rained and see where the problem spots are, what we can do as a stopgap measure, and then what we can do for long-term solutions. So that's what we're asking the court today, and I'm not expecting any definitive answers, but we'd like to work together with you from, as the community and the court, to maybe see what we can do to help, you know, get funding and long-term solutions for it. So that's what we're here for, and I'd like to hear any feedback or questions that the court may have.
Right now, in this court, I went out to talk to Roel Villarreal, and we got him on the vendor's list so we can buy colicchi from him, so we could service that area. As soon as we're done paving, what we're doing down here, about a week, week and a half, we'll go out there, you gotta need a quarter of an inch, I'll try to get the machine out there before then, just to help out with the passable, but we already have a vendor, so we're gonna start buying colicchi from him so we can service that area, so we can save money in the hauling and all that stuff, and do it ourselves.
So what's the goal on this? Is it to colicchi the entire road, or problematic areas, or...
The thing that happened there, with time, they started using the road as a drainage, so we need to slow down the water so we won't travel as fast and get all that erosion in there, so we're gonna try to do like we did with Sanchez, try to get some berms in there to slow the water down so it won't start eroding, and hopefully we'll get the road up to where it used to be, so we could cut it off to the ranches, so we won't have that.
Well, there's, I appreciate that, I think that's a great, great first step. The problem is, we don't, we really don't need it to get it to where it used to be, because it used to service ranches. Now it's servicing this wind industry, and those guys are tearing that road up. We've got to bring the road up to a standard that's fit for purpose for these huge trucks that are coming in, and the volume of traffic that's coming in there now, so...
Once we get it up there, they're gonna go in faster.
Pardon?
They're gonna go faster if we get the roads up to par.
Well, then we need some, you know, some efforts to keep that from happening, if, you know, we get some traffic control measures on the road.
I'm gonna interject here, this is a presentation, it's not for actual solutions or discussion. I think what needs to happen is you all need to get with the Commissioner and see what his plans are, and, you know, you all need to work together.
Yeah.
But under presentation, we're just supposed to hear, not respond to anything.
I understand.
So I would suggest that that happen. You all meet with the Commissioner.
Well, like I said, my goal here was to make sure everybody's aware of how bad the situation's gotten, and I appreciate, you know, you guys hearing that. If you'd like to come out to the ranch, I'll offer my house for a meeting place and come out, and we'll get the folks together.
We did go out there, and we got run off by some ostriches.
Pardon?
The ostriches ran us out. We went over there after the meeting to go see you, and we couldn't get down, the ostriches wouldn't let us get down. Yeah, so I'll call the office, and I'll call you or Roel to discuss or something.
Yeah, let's set something up that's kind of planned, where we can get people together at one time and talk about it, but, you know, the goal for all of us, I think, is to get La Morita Road up to the standards that, for the service that it needs to provide or is providing now, and get it fit for purpose, as we say. So come on out, we'll have a meeting, I think that'd be a great start, and then, forgive me, because I don't know the processes and everything, but, you know, I'd like to take, after that, maybe to look at short-term goals and then long-term goals, if we could.
I'll be out there this week, so we can speak to you.
Yeah, I think the Commissioner is, from what I hear, is aware, and he's working on it.
Okay.
So you all need to, some way, somehow, work together to get it done.
Well, I'll be here, I'm living here temporarily, I live in Houston, and then we have a house down here, the family lives there full-time. I'll be here all week, I'm coming down more and more frequently, we plan to retire here and live here permanently, but yeah, if you can make a time sometime this week when I'm here, I'd appreciate it, so I can, you know, be involved in the discussion, and we'll get the family together and the neighbors together, and then, you know, I'd like to see where we can go together.
That sounds good. We'll tell you up at 10.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners' Court. My name is Renee Olivares, and I'd just like to touch on some things that Mr. Campbell discussed, that, we were here last month, we talked about the cattle guards, but we also want to talk about the fact that ambulances and mail service and all of these things are...
I am Elsa Trevino Villarreal, by the way, I am a 48-year resident of El Rucio, and I have been through the ups and downs, mostly downs, of these roads, and we feel, we feel that we have been neglected more and more now than ever. There are six cattle guards that have not been taken care of for 16 months, not at all. The brush on the sides of the roads, they're ridiculous. I got stuck five times this morning, I ended up hitting the brush that is not cared for until I got myself out of there. You can go see the mud tracks if you want. The car washes refuse to wash our cars. Mail service, we got a letter, if you all saw that in the attachment, are refusing to go and take our mail, because by law, they have to be tended to 365 days out of the year, if not, they're gonna refuse to take our mail. Ambulances, there's no way they're gonna get in there, okay? And this is not only when it rains. Right now, it's really bad with a quarter of an inch. Imagine, the day that you all went and took care of the road, it was on the 15th, on the 16th, it poured. We couldn't get in or out, there was wrecks. We have videos and pictures of all this, and I don't know, it's crazy how we see all these Facebook posts on La Carla being paved, a piece of Alvarez Road, and again, we're neglected. We just keep on getting on the bottom of the list. I don't know what it's gonna take, and we need to be tended to on a regular basis, not a reminder, hey, can you come out here? Judge, I mean, Commissioner Sines, it wasn't even his job, all he would do was be peanut, this and this, I'll send whoever needs to go, get it done. He would get it done. What happened? 16 months and nada. Do you have something to add to that?
Well, we just want to get it on the record that the ambulance service is a major problem, especially because of the fact that we do have an aging community out there. The mail service is a definite problem. The fact that the cattle guards are still not suitable. I've spoken to you personally, my brother has gone out to speak to you personally about those cattle guards. We discussed the cattle guards last time about whose responsibility it was, I believe... I believe we tried to, well, someone tried to fix them on their own, and they are, at this point in time, they were, we've got, we have issues with those cattle guards. It's affecting our bottom line. I know the county, you know, it's gonna take money to get out there, but it's affecting our bottom line, and the fact that we cannot keep cattle out there any longer because they're out on public roads.
Going into that way.
So that's a safety concern, so...
And there's kids that go on, they're supposed to be on a bus. That went kaput, so the parents have to bring them into school, into the, why? That's not right.
We just wanted to get that on the record, make sure everyone is aware of what the situation is, so that when we do have this meeting with Commissioner Perez, that these things are not something that blindsides you, that you are aware. Let's hope to have a...
I'll be there this week.
Awesome. Give me a date, give me a time. I will leave my job to get to you.
I'll call you there this afternoon.
This afternoon, what time?
When I get out.
Okay, so we're headed to El Rocio?
Yeah.
Awesome. See you there.
But wait, you start out at El Sauz, and you come through La Morita, and you go north.
There's two rural take all the time, every time I go.
We're good. Let's see how many times you're gonna fall in a hole.
Right now, if it rains, I'm gonna fall in a hole.
Oh, no, 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 this is year-round. There's...
I don't have a cartagat in there, I'm sorry.
We'll talk over here.
Forgot it rained.
The hole, there's, I have a handicapped brother-in-law. I don't know how he has not gotten stuck in one of those holes that you don't see coming, and heaven knows, we'll never see him again, because that feo el camino de la morita, all of it. And Duke Energy is the one that is doing most of the traveling there, all the way to whatever it is that year-end, Commissioner Garza. It's La Morita, and then they turn off there where you say the winter Texans live, and they need to tend to that. Even if they have to pave, even that piece would be great. They need to come up with money. So I don't know if you can think of anything else? Can you all think of anything else? We have a list of all the people, all the ranchers that have property there, and they should have all been here to support us, and obviously they're not. And I'm talking about the owners of Duke Energy, of Barbie New House.
They're on the letter.
They're on the letter. Did you all read the letter?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Yeah, I did get it.
All those property owners are on there, and they're just as concerned as we are.
I'm gonna interrupt you, Ms. Garza, because normally presentations should not last more than five minutes. I've given you more lead time, you know, because I know the seriousness of the problem, but we do need to move on.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else that needs to come before the court at this time? If not, I'll go back to our reports. First one is Ms. Alina, Texas attorney.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
My report is in front of you. If you can please follow me, do you have it? The total collections for April 2024 for Starr County are $344,324.65. Current collections for April 2023 were $259,009.67 with 45 cents. There was a total collection of $84,357 with 20 cents more than last year. Current INS collections are $17,267.41. Our total delinquent collections were $229,859.86. Our total delinquent collections for April 2023 were $169,284.98. There was a total delinquent collections of $60,574.88 more than last year. As of April, we've collected 99% of the projected collections, projected collections remaining We have collected 44% of the projected delinquent collections. Projected delinquent collections remaining are $1,719,722.76. Collections made through the motor vehicle department are $66,918.96.
Any questions? Thank you, Ms. Alina.
Thank you.
County clerk, Mr. Gonzalez.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners.
Good morning.
Our report should be in front of you, just gonna highlight some of them. Our records management received $6,096.6. Our records archives collected $6,0694. Copies was $1,857.80. And then the county clerk collected for the general $16,666.25 for a total of $34,109.55. We had a pretty good month, Judge and Commissioners, for the month of April. We continue to see people coming in to renew their brands and marks and their pseudonym certificates. So we're putting something out in the paper like we talked the last time, just to kind of remind people, hey, you need to renew after 10 years, these two things, so, to generate some more funds into the county. Summer months will get a little slower, so hopefully we can generate some funds there. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners.
Good morning.
This is a revenue report for the month of April 2024. U.S.A. Solutions at $1,500. Marshal Transport Services is $9,503. Medical Services $1,303 for the Marshals. Marshals housing inmates $186,102. Hidal County Sheriff's Office at $222,292, $292 for a total of $425,700. The count for May the 3rd was federal inmates 100, Hidal County had 114, Starr County inmates at 94 for a total house of 308. The average monthly count for federal inmates was 95, Hidal County 118. The additional revenues from April 2023 to April 2024 was additional $44,008. At this time, we're at, year-to-date collected at $2,854,420. And that puts us at 67% collected for the year. That is my report, your honor.
Does this include the new fees?
That is correct, yes, sir. The new, the marshal contract was, went into effect on the 1st of May, of April, sorry.
That's very good.
And it's a 30-day month, not a 31. It's a day missing.
Any questions?
Thank you, your honor.
Yes, sir.
Good morning. This is the report for April 2024. The total revenue from traffic is $227,725.50, and we show an increase of $13,815.50 for the month of April 2023 compared to the month of April 2024. And we show a decrease of $3,704.50 on collections for the month of April 2024 compared to the month of March 2024. And we have the currency excess of $125.70, which is the grand total collections for the month of April. Do you have any questions?
No, I think the increase at the tolls, those take effect June 1st.
June 1st, yes, sir. Yes.
Any questions?
No, thank you. Thank you.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. You have my report for the month of April 2024. Just follow along with me. The ending balance for the general fund is at $7,102,293.96. The ending balance for the road and bridge is at $1,263,113.70. The enterprise funds is at $1,652,821.78. The drainage district is at $3,915,552.13. And I have included, Judge, the INS funds, and those are at $2,654,163.84, which brings the total ending balances, of all balances, to $16,587,945.41. That concludes my report. Are there any questions?
Yes, Mr. Gonzalez, one quick question.
Yeah.
Are CDs and our investments, they're normally in the banks, right?
Yes, that is correct, Judge.
Any possibility of exploring a pool, text pool? I understand that they pay a little more, and they're more liquid.
Yes. I believe, Judge, that they're paying, the last I checked, we were at a conference, and they're paying about 5.67, thereabouts, and the money's more liquid, but I can look and I can get back to you, maybe...
Yeah, you know, yeah, I think it's worth looking into.
Sure.
And then the court can make a decision as to whether it's beneficial to invest some monies over there, some local.
In the next meeting, Judge, I'll for sure bring something.
Because that's quite a bit of money. You know, 1% would be a big difference.
Oh, heck, yeah, yeah, yes. I will, Judge. Next meeting, I'll provide some information for you guys.
Okay. Any other question, County?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. The April 2024 report is in front of you. The report consists of three sections, cash, budget, and debt summary. 50% of the fiscal year has elapsed. As you can see, cash-wise, the general fund reconciled, it's $6.8 million. Road and Bridge is $1.2 million, and payroll clearing is half a million. The next page includes the budget for the revenue, which is 68%, and the expenditure is at 54%. And for the...
Before we move on from that page, page 2.
Oh.
You know, and this always comes up, and I always question it.
Yes.
The abatement payments from the different wind energies, they always show zero, and yet I know that they've paid, so I don't know where that money's going or where you're putting it.
Yes, usually, I think we talked about it a few years ago, I think, if I recall, it's, the way with the actual contract for the wind farms, it's, it was paid due at December 31st, so usually they wait till the last second to pay. So that's why, and it's budgeted for the fiscal year for this one. So this, the budget for this one's are gonna more likely come at December for this year, for the budget for the wind farms.
Well, but if they paid in December, wouldn't that be in this budget?
Yes, but it was budgeted in last year's.
So we're always running a year behind?
Yeah. Because I think, I think, last time I talked to Rose, that said their new contracts, they have them due at 9:30 for the payments for the wind farms.
Okay, well, as long as we're getting paid.
Oh, yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Let me see, I stated at Road and Bridge. Road and Bridge, revenue is at 73%, and expenditures is at 54%. Last page includes the summary for the debt service. Any questions?
Yeah, one other question. Back on page 2.
Yes.
The detention center, you have them at 40% collection, yet they're way over 50%.
Oh, yes, but the way I've talked to the sheriff, is usually they're like two, three months behind collection-wise.
What?
By the time that we get reimbursed from the marshals, they're like two, three months behind. That's why it shows 40%.
Okay, so in essence, the report that they just gave us...
Yes. We're gonna get it like in two, three months, the cash. By the time they work the process and the reporting, it takes about two, three months.
So actually, the report they gave us, that money is not here yet?
Yet, yes.
It's not here?
No.
Those monies are not in yet?
No, because they barely finished April, barely finished, so they can't collect right away. It takes, by the time they report, send the corrections, the reporting, everything, it takes about two, three months.
So let's say, for example, next fiscal year, we're still gonna be receiving money from this fiscal year, and we're already rolling with 2025.
Usually, yes, but at the end of 9:30, we usually receive the September, for September collections, we usually receive about December, maybe. January, the latest. So it takes about two, three, and all the procedures goes, and the approval and everything, so it takes about a few months for the detention.
So when the, when we, the end of year, our budget, which is September 31st?
Yes.
How much payment are they behind?
Like I said, they, we collect about two, three months after 9:30. Same thing with the expenditures.
Three months?
Yes, two, three months, depends on the procedure, how fast it is. Same thing with the expenditures also, if, closer to 9:30, but we can make payments until October, November, sometime December.
Well, how, not in the...
No, 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 but usually, yes.
The Sheriff's Department.
No, 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 I'm talking about expenses-wise, usually about a month after 9:30.
You just give us some money, and as I said, you shut it down.
Yeah.
But for them, you're still rolling.
No, no, I'm talking about revenue, cash-wise, not expenses.
Yeah. If there are two, three months behind, or something about over a million dollars, how is the Sheriff's Department, Detention Center getting paid over the expenditures and everything?
At the end, it's on a cruel basis and all balanced out. For the meantime, it just takes two, three months, that's the way it is.
And I guess that's the reason the audits, when they do the audit.
Yes.
Our fiscal year ends in September, yet the audit is not due till April or June or something.
So they're gonna get our number.
So that we can get all the money that's in transition so it can catch up.
Yes, yes, Judge.
Okay.
Any more questions?
Go ahead.
No, I'm done, Judge, already. Any more questions?
Any questions? Thanks. Moving on with our agenda. We'll move to item 11. This is an action item, and this is to approve a preliminary approval on River Walk Estates.
Yes, good morning. River Walk Estates is in precinct 1, and we're asking for preliminary.
We have to approve, Your Honor.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. Oliver, please, aye? Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. President. Next, item 12, and this is to approve a license to use the property granted to U.S. Department of Veterans Affairs. What this is, is, I'm sure you all have seen the veteran bus, I guess for lack of a better word, that parks in a parking lot, I think it's on Wednesdays, to service our veterans, health service. They want to now, instead of coming only Wednesdays, to come twice a week, because apparently they've had, a lot of veterans go by and use it, so they wanna, they wanna do it two days a week, so they want to update their contract to use the parking lot twice a week.
Motion to approve.
Moved in second, discussion. Oliver, please, aye? Opposed? Motion carries. 13 and 14, I'm gonna skip over those until we come out of executive session. Item 15 is to approve a service agreement. Item fifteen is to approve a service agreement between Cintas and the detention center. This is a pretty standard contract. Moved in second, discussion. Honorable, please say aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item sixteen and seventeen, well, I guess they're different, but they they look similar. Let's take item sixteen. This is an action item. And this to approve Homeland Security Grant Division for fiscal year twenty five for bullet resistance shield program. Moved in second, discussion. Honorable, please say aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item seventeen is similar, but this is program grant number fifty seventy four, seven oh one. And this is a grant that will begin September first through August thirty first of twenty five. Moved in second to approve, discussion. Honorable, please say aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item eighteen, is there anyone here from the District Attorney's office? Yes.
That's me.
Okay, yeah, this item is from District Attorney and this is to for Ms. Alinas to be paid from discretionary funding. You know, when we first approved this, it was approved only for three months and it's been almost a year now. Is there any cutoff point in in the future? You know, I'm I'm concerned because she's an employee for the county and getting paid two checks, so.
I agree, there should have been a deadline too.
I'm sorry?
I agree, there should have been a deadline.
Yeah, so.
I also questioned it when I came in, why? We can, we can reset it for next Commissioners Court. And I'll have either Mr. Ramírez or Abel Villarreal come in and explain why. Because I also question it.
You know, you know, like I said at the beginning, it was only, I don't know if the court remembers, but it was only for a certain period of time. I think it was like three months until someone would get trained.
And I want to say it's been over a year already.
It's been over a year, yeah. So, you know.
Motion to table for next meeting.
Let's go ahead and and wait for next meeting, yes.
Okay. There's a motion for tabling. Is there a second?
No, there is a second.
Second.
All right, thank you.
Discussion. Honorable, please say aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Items nineteen through thirty three are budget amendments, same or they're in order. Moved in second to approve, discussion. Honorable, please say aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Items thirty four and thirty five are budget corrections. Have a motion in second to approve, discussion. Honorable, please say aye. Oppose. Motion carries. It is now ten fifty five and pursuant to section five five one, point oh seven four. And five five one, point oh seven two, we'll go into executive session to discuss the order of salaries, the plan assessment for year twenty five, the workers' loss, comp loss control, and to discuss real estate. Eleven forty and we're back in open session. Some of the items that were discussed in the executive session was order of salaries.
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Second. Moved in second to approve as presented, discussion. Honorable, please say aye. Oppose. Motion carries. The action plan for assessment for twenty five and the workers' comp loss control were just informational, no action needed. And the other thing that was discussed was the purchase or the offer that was made by CBP to purchase some real property, a one point seven one five acres of land.
Motion to approve, Your Honor, based on Mr. Montalvo's approval and your and your approval also.
Moved in second, discussion. Honorable, please say aye. Oppose. Motion carries. And that's all I have. Is there a motion?
Ah, si verdad.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah.
That's over.
Yeah, items. Items thirteen and fourteen, these are action items. And this is to allow CBP to enter into our right of ways for surveying, for site assessments.
Motion to approve, Your Honor, second.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. Honorable, please say aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Moved in second, Honorable, please say aye. Oppose. Motion carries.